To call the meeting to order. Tammy is absent, everyone else is present. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
By the United States of America. We are the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible.
We're gonna start with a special presentation this evening?
Yeah, I'd like Griffin Periot, please come up. Yes, we're here to recognize Griffin Periot. He's a junior at New Prague High School and very accomplished student athlete, one that we're very proud of. He's, the last two years, he's been a Christmas tournament champion down in Rochester, which is probably one of the biggest high school wrestling tournaments in the nation, one of the most prestigious, so he's won that two years in a row. And this year, just like last year, he won the state championship. He's in 145-pound weight class for double A, so a two-time state champion. Recently, he was named honorable mention on the ASICS national team, one of the top-ranked wrestlers right now in high school throughout the nation. So, he's had a great career, a lot of accomplishments, and, like I said, we're very proud of him, and we want to recognize him tonight, again, a state champion wrestler.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Are you gonna be wrestling this summer to keep in shape for next year?
Yeah, I think I might be going out to the Olympic Training Center in Colorado for a couple months.
Oh, fun.
Where are you going next year?
I'm not sure, well, I might be a senior, but after that...
Oh, you've got one...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm looking at Purdue, University of Wisconsin, Minnesota, and Nebraska.
I assume when you go out to Colorado, you'll be seeing a lot of wrestlers who've had a lot of experience, quite a few years older than you?
Yeah, a lot of them have been to the Olympics and stuff like that, so...
And you, I'm assuming that you're gonna see some of these guys who have these funny-looking gears?
Yeah, I already got them.
How do you, oh, you do have them, how do you prevent that, or do you do anything?
Too late now for me.
Do you recommend something for younger kids?
Yeah, wear the headgear.
Okay.
That's a badge of honor. Griffin, you wanna talk about the most recent national tournament you just competed in?
Yeah, it was in Vegas, mainly college guys, but I took third, so...
In our nation, so...
What do you do for excitement?
What?
What do you do for excitement?
Uh, eat and hang out with friends, I guess.
All right, well, great.
I was gonna say, we're gonna see you next year then, right?
Yup, yup.
And, I was gonna ask how many scales you have at your house, but that's probably not...
Just one.
Okay. Because you have to keep that...
It doesn't change.
I had that for a while, but...
And have any schools offered you scholarships yet, or where are you at with that?
So far, it's just been Purdue.
Purdue's offered you a full scholarship?
Yeah, but later this summer, we'll talk more about money and stuff like that.
Yep, and wrestling, you know, they usually split scholarships up, and a lot of schools, but some, obviously, a high recruit like Griffin can get most of their tuition and board paid for, so it's got a great future. Go ahead, Sherry.
Sorry. I was gonna ask you, because you told us, I think, last time, how many years does your career span with wrestling?
Uh, it started when I was four.
Okay, you were saying?
I didn't get serious until, like, probably like, third, fourth grade, I started going a lot harder.
What are your thoughts next year for the New Prague High School team?
I think we should be pretty good. I mean, we graduated James Berg, who was pretty good, and a couple others, but we have a lot of good JV guys coming up.
And if you remember, we had a heartbreaker, they lost, the team lost in the section championship, it went to the third tiebreaker against Scott West.
Yup, and we beat them by one.
Previously, so we've had exciting matches with them, but it was a tough, tough way to go. We would've had four teams go to the state tournament this year in consecutive weekends with boys hockey, girls hockey, and, uh, boys basketball, so it's been pretty neat. But they had a heck of a year, and, again, the wrestling program, we got kids like Griffin and a lot of dedicated kids, and I think consistently wrestling's gonna be a threat to state every year for a long time, so, uh, thanks, Griffin, and...
Thanks.
Appreciate it, why don't we, you guys just stand up, we're gonna have him walk around and handshake, and then we got something for him coming tonight. He's gotta go work out now.
Next, we have the approval of our agenda. Any additions, or subtractions?
Yes, we're gonna take the high school handbook off right now, we're not quite ready for that, there's some things we need to talk about coming up here before we approve it.
Is that it? I'll make the motion to approve the agenda, then.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. Consent agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Any further discussion?
There's a couple of new retirements. I think we're honoring seven or eight of them on Thursday at Creek's Bend, and we're certainly gonna miss all of them. They're all important in what they were doing.
Anything else?
Just wanna also just say, as long as we're talking about that, I was gonna mention this earlier, but we have the retirement celebration this Thursday at Creek's Bend from four, I think the social hour begins at four, and the program will be at five o'clock to recognize those people, so yeah, we do thank them for their years of service.
Okay, all in favor of passing the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Committee reports, policy.
Okay, we're, we've been working on getting all the policies on a three-year cycle, so that's moving along, and we're gonna meet in the summer, during the summer, to try to continue to coordinate it into the three-year cycle, and our new, we have a committee that we formed recently for the Wellness Committee, it's called the Wellness Committee, and they're reworking the committee, basically to meet the state guidelines and mandates that have been presented to, that we need to meet, and we're gonna have an upcoming presentation on that, to roll that out with the mission statement and new logo. Did you want to add anything to that, Tim? Or, okay. So that's what's exciting and coming up from the Policy Committee.
Yeah, and I would say just one thing, in the Wellness Committee, it's been, we've had two meetings thus far, and the participation, we got people on there, staff members that really wanna be on there and make improvements in our whole nutrition program, so it's exciting to see that, and led by our new Nutrition Director, Kim Frana.
And when are you gonna be presenting something on that?
Uh, they're going to make an upcoming date. Haven't done that yet, they've met twice, like Tim said.
A work session?
Uh, you know, does it, do you guys have a preference between work sessions? She wanted to come tonight, although the agenda was a little full, so we...
We can have her come in June?
Yeah.
Work session, right?
Work session in June?
It's better.
Okay, good, I'll let her know, thanks.
Southwest Metro.
We had our meeting last Tuesday on the 19th. We had several reports from programs in the Southwest Metro co-op. One of them was the New Beginnings Program for women who are still trying to finish their school, even though they have maybe a child that they also have to be taken care of, or that they're expecting as well. Stepping Stones made a presentation, and we also had a presentation about involvement with the Peace Center. The students over at Southwest Metro have been doing some cooperative work with our Peace Center here in New Prague, so I thought that was pretty, pretty neat. We had the regular business work, but one of the nicest things was Grace Church donated $10,000 to the program, the New Beginnings Program, and that was, that was wonderful, because that program does cost a lot, because we have to provide daycare for the children who are, the, the parents are going, the mom is going to school, and we have to provide daycare for other children that are in the program as well, so it was a very wonderful thing to accept that $10,000 gift from Grace Church. And also, Grace Church has been involved in doing some maintenance work and some work on the facility itself, so the people at Grace Church have really taken upon themselves to kind of adopt that program and do a lot of good things for those young women as they're struggling to get through school with some tough times ahead, but we had a couple of the girls that came and spoke to us, and they're both graduating this year, and they're moving on, and it's a wonderful program. And then, we also had a few updates as far as upcoming events, and then we had a report from Paul Applekowski of World Architects, and what we're gonna be doing is an addition onto the building over in Jordan, what used to be the Mersec Building is now, of course, part of Southwest Metro, and we're going to be doing an addition to that facility, and World will be doing the architectural work on that. They were the ones that initially were the architects when that building was built a number of years ago, so we hired them as being the architects, and we're getting it done under budget. It's gonna be a tough thing to do, but we're actually going to start it next fall, and their thinking is that a project like this, which isn't very large in scope, will have a good chance to get some good bids, because at the start of winter, a lot of construction firms don't have a lot of work lined up for the winter, so hopefully, we'll get some good bids, and we'll be able to bring it in under, under the budget.
Danny, do you get funding, there's funding within the system, then, for something like this?
Actually, that was money that the superintendents and the board decided to, instead of, you know, going back to the member districts, we decided to use that money that would've maybe come back in some smaller amounts to the member districts to, to fund the, the building addition.
So it's already, from what the districts have paid in, it's already there?
That's correct, right, there will be no additional cost to the districts, right? It was only the money that could've come back as a, a payment for when the, the two districts were combined. And, oh, and then, we were in the education bill that got passed, as far as the Southwest Metro becoming an intermediate district rather than a co-op, and because of the governor's veto of that bill, we'll, we'll have to go back to the drawing boards again. Hopefully, we'll be put into the bill that will be coming for the special session, and we will become an intermediate, and that information will be coming down the pike as soon as the special session has been called and passed. And what it'll, what it'll do, we require our boards and all the other boards to approve it as a resolution to become an intermediate district rather than a co-op.
And is that a benefit to operations?
It is, actually, it's a savings. We, we will find the savings about $70,000 right off the bat by being an intermediate district rather than a co-op, and then also, it gives the intermediate district a little more leeway as to how to do their financing and things, so it's a good thing, all the way around, but the biggest thing is that it actually does save $70,000 in the cost. And let me see if there's something else here. Oh, there are several graduations. Southwest Metro, this'll be the second year now where we will actually be giving a diploma to students that choose to go through our program and earn a diploma, rather than going back to their home district. Some students have been involved with Southwest Metro for so many years, that, you know, they don't have a lot of affiliation with their home district, so they, they choose to actually go through the diploma process through Southwest Metro, and so there'll be several graduations of students who have gone through programs and will be getting a diploma actually from the Southwest Metro. And I believe that takes care of it.
CPAC meet?
We did not meet, but they did do appreciation for the staff members, I might've mentioned this last time, but it's worthwhile mentioning again, the CPAC parents got together and did a luncheon for the staff members that provide special needs services in our district, and it was much appreciated by the, by the staff members.
All right, thank you. Community Ed?
Our last meeting will be this Thursday at 6:00. Couple of other things, Eagleview has really colored up their playground, so this Saturday, they're having a color run, and a bunch of activities involved there, and you can find it on the internet if you'd like more information. Also, Eagleview put up a, a reading garden, kind of a park, it's got a reading garden bench in honor of Mrs. Freer, who passed away a couple of years ago, and it's on the north side of the school, it's kind of away from the playground, so if any kid, instead of participating in recess, would rather go sit and read, they may do so.
All right, thank you. Superintendent Report.
Yeah, I'll first start off talking about awaiting a special session with the legislature. Sandy's gonna be up here, we're gonna be giving a preliminary budget presentation, but it's sort of difficult to do when we don't know what the funding's gonna be here, and it will be based on a pretty conservative approach, which we need to, since we don't know what's gonna happen here, so, as you know, you've heard me say, and I've told our local legislators, our top three priorities are funding to the formula, funding to the formula, and funding to the formula. I think the problem becomes sometimes in Minnesota where we have all these unfunded mandates, and I'll talk about one of these during the presentation here, that we get mandates to do things, and they're unfunded. If we have money to the formula, that gives us flexibility to do what we need to do locally, because, as you know, all the districts in Minnesota, everyone's got different needs, and right now, there's a lot of, we have a lot of categorical funding, and there isn't much equity, so it'll be interesting what happens here, but we're just in a wait mode right now, and obviously, I've been contacting our local legislators and people on the Education Committee on our thoughts for our district that will help us. What's coming up right now, our first planning sessions are beginning next week, on June 3rd, we'll have our first meeting Wednesday, June 3rd, and that will be our core planning groups, we'll have a group that I've asked Brad Greger, our middle school principal, to put together, a core planning group from the middle school. Janelle Kirsch, our Community Services Director, is putting together a core planning group from the CEC that will represent them for the planning and design as we move ahead here. So those two will be meeting next June 3rd, and then also, on June 16th, I know World Architects are already planning all-day tour of different middle schools, and will include our pool task force, we'll also be visiting pools on that day at different sites, and so Brad Skogarbo is hitting up that task force, which the pool task force will be communicating, collaborating, or, I say, reporting to the CEC Core Planning Group also. So, those groups will be, I'm not sure how many times the pool task force will meet, I'm sure at least three times this summer, the other ones will be meeting every other week, I think on Tuesday mornings, we're gonna meet throughout the summer until fall, and before we involve the user groups, and, and obviously, we've got Kit and Jerry representing the Project Oversight Committee, that they'll get the, you know, be seeing the plans as they go through here, and making sure we stay within budget and what we, you know, presented to the taxpayers for approval. So, we're excited, and it's gonna be a lot of work, but it's gonna be a lot of good work and fun work, as I look at it, so that's where we're at there. The other thing we do is an annual survey, district survey, and we have the results back from then, and I thought, we'll go in detail a little bit more at our next work session, but we went up in a lot of areas, and it's pretty hard to go up in some of the areas, but we had about 30 statements where parents would strongly agree, agree with the statement, disagree, or strongly disagree. And for example, my child's school is clean and well-maintained, and we had 98.14% of our parents agree or strongly agree. Some of the other highlights that I'd like to share with you, and also the public, my child feels safe at school, 97.8%, 80% of the, almost 98% agreed or strongly agreed. The environment at my child's school supports learning, just over 97% of the parents agreed or strongly agreed with that. The education offered to students at our, our schools is of high quality, 96.76% of parents agreed or strongly agreed with that. One that I think is really interesting, I think this is very important and encouraging, teachers use technology to engage students in learning, we had 96.18% of our parents agree or strongly agree with that. And then, I wanna say one more thing, too, I started with about, our school's clean and well-maintained, which obviously is a big compliment to our buildings and grounds that are custodians. The school offices provide a helpful and welcoming environment, we had 95.83% of our parents agree or strongly agree with that, so we had 823 surveys returned on this, so it was, I think, a real strong feedback from our parents, and I'm not gonna go over the whole thing, we'll go over this in a work session, and obviously, there's some areas that we need to improve on, but overall, you know, even comparing those statements, the ones I just said there, they were high last year, and they were high again this year, they actually went up by half percent, or some as many as two percentage points, so...
Is it possible to mention a few of the places we need to improve on, or do you wanna wait till the work session?
I think we'll wait, I gotta go through this right now, you know...
That's fine.
You know, some of the things we need to improve on is, just generally right now, is, you know, providing healthy meal choices, but we're in the works with that, and Kim Frana's doing an awesome job as our Nutrition Director, and part of it, I think, is still the, the kickback with our federal guidelines, and so we're, she's working hard to improve that, we got some things with guidance on post-secondary education that we need to improve on, too, and I've asked Lonnie Cypher to address and get an action plan together on that, so, overall, everything good is actually better than last year, so I think that's very important, I think, obviously, it's a factor, and I even look at the results on our referendum, I think there's a lot of trust in our district, and we gotta, we gotta continually to build on that, and can't be happy where we're at right now, and just try to get better every day, and every week, and every year. So there's good news, I wanna congratulate the city of New Prague, niche.com has a website, and they ranked New Prague 54th in the United States and 5th in Minnesota as one of the top 100 towns to raise a family, to raise a family in America, ranked 54th in that, and we'll send that website to you, so I think we put it on social media today, on Twitter and Facebook, so that's really neat, and for us, part of the, they have the criteria on there, if you wanna look at that, but 20% of the ranking was on, based on the school district results that we have, and, you know, academically and stuff like that, so that we played a, obviously, a key role in that, but we wanna congratulate the city of New Prague. And another thing, this is, we'll have Matt Shanebauer here in June at our next meeting, but we just found out today that Matt Shanebauer, he's our star adaptive floor hockey player and softball player, has been named the Ed Prohowski Most Valuable Player Award for Adaptive Athletics in the entire state of Minnesota. This is like being the, you know, the Metro or All-State Player of the Year in any of the sports, he was for Adaptive Athletics, so this is a huge honor, it's named in honor of Ed Prohowski. Ed Prohowski was a well-known high school basketball coach at Marshall University in Minne- Minneapolis, he was a physical education teacher, he was a huge advocate of adaptive physical education, and he's the one that really got going, the ball rolling with Adaptive Athletics at the high school level. He's also been the, he helps out, assistant coach at the Minnesota Timberwolves right now, and so this is a great honor for Matt Shanebauer, and I just wanted to share that with you, and like I said, we'll have him here in June, this is, we're very happy for Matt, he was, had a huge role in our, our success here in Adaptive Athletics, especially last year, winning the state championship, so congratulations to Matt and his family. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
And, I forgot one last thing. My last thing is, I wanna introduce Maren Baller, Maren, please come up to the table. She's our new Director of Curriculum and Assessment, and she was our, we hired her as an interim, and then obviously, we posted the position of Nancy DeBose, and she went through the inter, we had a lot of good candidates, and she came out as our top candidate, so I was very pleased to offer her the position, which she's accepted, and I asked her to come tonight, so you can see the name to the face here, and if, Maren, you wanna just talk just briefly of, you know, what you're doing now, and as you see curriculum assessment in the New Prague School District, and how you see it growing?
So, we are working, I'm working closely with Tony Boothy and Sean Brant, and we're working at really making sure that our curriculum is aligned K-12, and just becoming more cohesive with our scope and sequence, and with that also comes aligning our curriculum with preschool, and so we wanna become that pre-K-12 community, and all working together, and so that's definitely gonna be our focus for this next year. And also, with assessment, of course, it was a little iffy some of those days when Pearson shut down the state, so it made the job very interesting, but we'll be keeping an eye on what the state will be doing with assessments, and if we'll continue to go with Pearson, or if we'll be going with a new vendor, and just keeping in check how many assessments we're having our students go through, and making sure that those assessments are valid and that we're using them, so keeping, keeping students at our first priority. I come from the classroom, and I was an elementary teacher, along with being a reading specialist, and so very passionate about keeping kids first.
Was everyone able to finish their testing, once they got the computers?
Yes. We are done testing, and everyone was able to finish, so, and I do have an email from the state reassuring me that our data was not affected, and so that was reassuring as well, because the shutdown happened actually a few times.
Did anyone, like, have to go back and redo their tests, or?
They weren't able to redo, some of them were logged out, but, so they had to continue either the next day or later in the day.
But their earlier stuff was still saved?
Right, right, yep, everything was saved, it was just a matter of more the classroom disruption of not knowing when testing would begin, and just kind of the unknown, but our teachers were flexible, our kids were flexible, and we rolled with it, that's, that's all we could do, so...
You wanna talk about meeting with any curriculum groups this summer?
Yes, we're gonna work with our FIED department, along with our Health Department, K-12, they have not been looked at since the early 2000s, and so we wanna ensure, and I've also been talking with Cheryl Kolesch, our Director of Health Services, to tie in with what the Wellness Committee has started, and so we want that cohesive collaboration going. We're adopting new English curriculum in grades 6-11, and so, and also, new Spanish and new German curriculum at the high school levels, so we'll be working with those departments and ensuring that they're able to roll out their curriculum with fidelity, and along with really continuing to look at our standards of, of all areas.
Okay, any other questions? And like she mentioned about working with Tony and Brad, you know, Tony spearheads a lot of the things that we do, is staff development, and Sean Brant with technology, and they, everything's so intertwined, especially on the technology and with Sean Brant, so I'm really looking forward, I think they're gonna make a great team, and, and Maren's got great people skills, she's very bright, hardworking, I know she's gonna do a fabulous job and facilitate these groups, and I know we're gonna take a huge step forward in the next year with, under her leadership, so, thank you, Maren, for coming this evening, and like I said, appreciate you, everything you do.
Thank you. Thank you. First item for our action discussion is to approve the band and choir trips.
All right, we've got Ryan Utech, yeah, our choir director, and Brian Thorstedt, our instrumental music marching band director here.
Thanks for allowing us to be here and for your consideration of, uh, the upcoming trips, uh, and tours for our music department. Uh, we're here to present two trips, uh, this evening. Uh, one to New York City and another will be a music cruise. And the reason we're, uh, presenting two trips, uh, is so that we might be able to align our travel schedules so that our band and choir programs, uh, will be able to tour at the same time from, for the foreseeable future. In the past, band traveled one year and we were on an alternating cycle. We'd like to make sure that we, um, we tour at the same time, both to maximize the school calendar and to minimize the impact on the classroom. When we are gone, um, the two trips, uh, the New York trip will be an arts appreciation tour for seniors only. Uh, the reason for this trip, uh, that will be in March of two thousand and sixteen. The reason for that trip is so that, uh, our, our current seniors were planning on a trip for the two thousand and sixteen year. Many of whom have already fundraised significant dollars for, uh, for a music trip. And our school calendar does not allow a full week for a trip. So that's, that's the reasoning for a seniors-only trip, to allow them an opportunity that they've been planning on for the past few years. And then our, the following trip would be a performance cruise. Um, we, we did a band cruise a couple of years back with great success. The, uh, students were wonderful, performances were wonderful and clinicians were great as well. So a really educational opportunity for our students. Um, and so we are going to, we would like to propose doing that in March of two thousand and seventeen, the spring of two thousand and seventeen. That would be open to all students in grades nine through twelve who are registered for band or choir at that time. And so I think all of the details are outlined in the proposals in front of you. Um, and we can certainly accept any questions if, that you might have.
For the public who's watching, we had this presented to us at a work session and there's more details on their schedules on the website and board docs if anyone is interested in looking at that.
There's never been any issues before, so I don't see why we just can't keep moving forward with these trips. I'm, I'm fine with them. If anybody else has any. Ready to make a motion or?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the trips.
Second, any further discussion?
No, I think the, uh, programs were, uh, laid out for us very thoroughly and their plans are very accurate and very good. So I think it should be a good experience for the students.
On favor?
Aye.
I just want to make a comment that, you know, while some districts are cutting down their programs, even eliminating band, I just thank you to you, what you guys do. And it's nice to have the fifth grade start choir and do band in fifth grade. There, it kind of gives them a jumpstart. So I, I, sometimes I feel like we're a liberal arts, um, high school, like a liberal arts college, so what we offer, so thank you.
Well, I would say too on this, to, the public should know this. Uh, well, first of all, going back to the survey, I didn't read that one, but we rank, uh, the activities experienced, co-curricular activities, um, in the fine arts area actually rated quite high, um, uh, by parents. The other thing is when I came here back in two thousand and three, two thousand and three, four school year, we had one band director. Sandy Gallagher. She did high school and middle school. We didn't have fifth grade band. Um, so she, she did the whole ball whacks and, uh, next year we'll have three and a half, uh, band directors. And we increased, uh, another halftime choir director too. So at the middle school next year, we'll have, you know, equivalent to three music, uh, teachers. So that's a good thing and, you know, I think our communities here in New Prague, uh, value the arts. I keep saying over and over again, we need to have balance. Uh, but we need to achieve, strive for excellence in academics, uh, fine arts and athletics. And there's nothing wrong with that, but a good, comprehensive, well-balanced educational program, uh, is what we're striving for.
And then you'll have band uniforms, right? For the summer, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right? I guess officially the motion passes six zero, but thank you for presenting and for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you two to wait on the next, uh, item on the agenda for your comments?
Yep.
Sure.
So you're staying there.
The next item is the high school daily schedule change.
Yeah, and this is something we went over at the work session. Um, and, uh, what, uh, Lonnie Cypher, our principal, wants to do is embed, uh, professional collaboration time into the daily schedule. So on Thursdays, I believe there's a total of twenty-four Thursdays. Uh, that was a day he mentioned, uh, I think probably eleven or twelve times there aren't Thursdays in the calendar. But twenty-four Thursdays will have embedded professional collaboration time. Uh, school, uh, would be released for all students at one fifty, um, with the school day still ending at two thirty-one. So it'd be mandatory collaboration with all staff, uh, with administration and support staff doing the supervision of students. Uh, buses would still be leaving at the regular time at two thirty. So, uh, obviously the supervision is very important there too. So, uh, Lonnie Cypher couldn't make it today, but just I wanted to review, uh, oh, provide an overview of that. See if there's any questions and obviously Don's going to have a question, uh, to Mr. Utech and Mr. Thorstedt that they may be able to answer regarding this daily schedule change.
And the other thing is they're doing this by shortening the classes on Thursdays.
Yeah, seven minutes. Yep, I'm sorry, I forgot that. Seven minutes they're shortening the classes, uh, to do this. Uh, like I said, about twenty-four times during the year.
Okay, um, when people see this in the newspaper, uh, they're going to ask some questions. They've already asked me some. Um, in, in your, uh, opinion, what, what would be a good definition of collaboration for, uh, the ordinary person walking downtown?
Well, I think part of the reason why, for the schedule change is that we have to have time where teachers can get together to review what students are doing and make sure that courses are aligned. You know, if two, if two students are receiving the same class and taking the same class, their assessment should, many of their assessments should be similar. And then we should be looking at how they're doing and finding our strengths and weaknesses to improve the education that we're giving them. And right now, we don't have a piece, uh, in our schedule to allow us to do that, uh, as effectively, as effectively as we could if we had one. And so I think that's part of the reason for the request that's in front of us.
Are you, uh, just going to meet, uh, with the other band people or is it possible you'll meet with the choir also?
I think often I, from what I understand of the proposal, we would most likely be, uh, the choir, music department at the high school would be collaborating together to talk about, um, our, our achievements and how our students are learning and what adjustments we need to make to keep improving that education.
Okay, um, Charlie's getting all this down to make sure if he understands.
Right.
Okay, uh, band, band director, uh, or not band director, but choir director. Um, ta- take me through a, uh, a typical forty-minute period. Um, let's say on the first time that you guys meet, what would you be doing?
Uh, the first time we meet, we usually talk about our norms, so the ways that we're going to do business and set down some guidelines and things like that. Um, what we would do, um, after that, I mean, we can, there are some things that we could do as far as assessments, um, that are somewhat similar. Some things might be a little bit, there, our kids are in slightly different places though too, depending on the type of music, the, the, um, the skills that, that we have as well. So some things are a little bit easier to, to collaborate on than others. Um, you have anything to add with that, Brian?
So in the, you're wondering what collaboration would look like and how that time would be used amongst teachers? Is that correct? Right.
Oh, in general.
So, right. So during that collabora- collaboration time, you'd be find, you'd find teachers, uh, establishing norms and then getting ready for which assessments are going to be offered. And then you would, uh, in future sessions, you would be looking, having teachers look at those assessments and actually look at the assessments and saying, okay, what are we doing? How are our students lining up? Where can we, where are they not understanding what's been taught? And how can we adjust our teaching to make sure there aren't any gaps in what they're learning?
Yep. And if one teacher sees that, oh wow, your students are, are, are doing really well on this skill. And then you say, hey, what are you doing? How are you teaching this differently so that I can be, so that my kids can get caught up in that? And maybe, you know, you share your ideas in that way too.
Would you, uh, be offering suggestions to the fifth grade band and sending down suggestions to them so that there's cohesiveness from fifth grade on up or fourth grade on up?
I think that's an aspect of all collaboration that in all of the departments at the high school level. Um, that idea of moving from K-12 and making sure everything's aligned, kind of what Maren was talking about earlier. Making sure that everything is aligned for, for what we expect, what students need to know at high school and making sure that the transitions from level to level are appropriate are definitely things that will come as a result of this process.
I think one thing that was brought up in our work session too is teachers who are teaching the same class want to make sure everyone is learning the same thing. And, and I think in the past, the teaching model has been kind of, you could set your own class and what you were going to teach. But now there's so many different types of assessments where people need to learn certain things in English and certain things in math. You know, you can't place a higher priority on one part of the class than the other. And so this gives teachers time to collaborate to make sure they're all working on the same things together. And, and like you pointed out, give tips if, if you, if one class is doing really well on one type of assessment, they can, you know, give some advice to the other class that might be struggling.
Exactly.
It's, it's a whole different teaching model, kind of.
Well, right now with the state standards, if we, they, they don't have time to teach all the state standards. So the first thing is they, number one, they have to decide what, what do they expect every kid to be able to know and be able to do in each of the classes? And, uh, obviously that first question, you know, as a math teacher, Don, your former math teacher, you can't teach all the state standards. So they have to prioritize which ones are most important, decide in that algebra one class or algebra two class, for example, you know, what, what do we expect every kid to be able to know and be able to do? The second thing, the other question that drives their collaboration, like they were talking about, is how do we know if they've learned it? And that's the assessment piece. And then the third thing, you know, what are we going to do if they haven't learned it? And that's what they were talking about too. Or what are we going to do if they've already learned it? And that's extension and really, uh, pushing those kids and stretching them to learn new things. So that whole collaboration time, the high school, the last seven, eight years with Principal Doge and Principal Cypher recently, they've been trying all these different things, but none of them, none of the collaboration times have been, uh, common with their department, their grade level department, and they haven't been consistent, it hasn't been embedded and it just basically hasn't worked. I will say as a former middle school principal, you know, we've had that opportunity and the elementary has too and it's made a world of difference. And I'll stand by the results of the middle school. Uh, it's, it's through research, the number one, uh, factor in, in proving student learning is that professional collaboration and doing that as professional learning community. And like I said, I'll stand by the results of the middle school.
Maybe a year from now, Mr. Cypher can report back as to how it went. Be great.
Oh, obviously, everything we're doing, we're always taking a look and if it's, even if it's done well, what can we do to make it better? And if it's not going well, we've got to face, uh, be upfront and, you know, look at it and.
And that's why you're, it's being built into the day is because the way they were doing it after school or before school was, it, it just didn't work as well as it should work this way.
It was taking away time from kids too, who are very busy with either before-school activities or sports after school. So they weren't getting to meet with kids enough.
And I think the, the entire staff knows this is, this is one recommendation that, uh, you know, they're, they're supportive of.
Yeah, we had a PLC conference or, uh, someone come in from California, I believe. And he was talking through a lot of ideas about how do we actually do professional learning communities? And this was one of his recommendations, so.
And I think it would go even beyond the department as the year goes on. I would think that you'd collaborate with different two departments together to go over certain things.
Yeah, you can have, uh, professional learning networks, people, yep.
I, uh, didn't mean to put you guys on the spot, but I had so much confidence.
You did a very good job after being put on the spot.
Pretty good for music people.
Could have sung it better.
They can take it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the high school daily schedule change.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Um, I don't know. Mr. Dittberger and I have talked about this before. What goes around, comes around. When I was student taught, we got out every other Wednesday and corroborate, corroborate. I don't know what the heck they call it back then.
But you were before MCAs. These are high stakes now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six zero. Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
Uh, next we have the approval of a district contribution for the Memorial Park baseball field renovation.
Let me just clarify too. I don't know how we phrase this here, district compu- it's basically, um, we're getting charged rental fee or lease for the ballpark. Um, just like we are for the hockey arena, just like we are for the gymnastics center. Uh, we just have never been charged before, uh, from the city for the baseball park. So this is, uh, really approval of, of, uh, a lease amount that's been proposed by the, uh, city of New Prague. And, uh, obviously it's tied into the improvements that, uh, are going to be made, that really do need to be made. But we've gone, I don't know how many years, uh, we've been at the baseball park since it got transformed from a football field. But probably thirty, at least thirty years.
I would say fifty.
Fifty years?
Back in the sixties.
All right, fifty years without a lease, uh, to use the field for free. Um, so, uh, it's not like we're donating money here or anything like that. This is part of a lease that, uh, will make improvements and something that is very similar to what we do with gymnastics and, uh, boys and girls hockey.
And both with the gymnastics and hockey, we've paid to, to help with lease improvements that have been done in addition to our rental fees. So this is nothing.
Right. Which, for example, gymnastics, we approved last year, um, the lease, uh, for gymnastics, lease levy for sixty-five thousand for improvements in the gymnastics center. So we can get a locker room for the, our girls and, uh, more space and that is over five years?
I believe it's over five years.
Five years. So this one is over seven years. Uh, Jerry, you want to talk more about the?
I'd like to add one comment before Jerry speaks. And the other side of the coin is that, uh, without us using the facility that the city owns, we would have to create our own facility, uh, and start from scratch, uh, to build a, a high school baseball field on our own. And that would not be a cheap endeavor and, uh, it would not be, um, very practical either, especially with the cost of land and, and other things that would, uh, enter into it. So, you know, that, that's another side of the, of the coin too.
I forgot. The other agreement we have with the lease for athletics is golf.
And the high school probably uses this, about a fourth, for about a fourth of the games played on there, the school does use it. And I forgot to mention, we did have Brad Skogarbo and Tom Wetchka, our baseball coaches, part of this committee. And the community has been great to work with, uh, this, uh, city council. And I think it's a pretty fair, reasonable deal for us, like Danny said, it's a lot cheaper than building our own park. So, looking for a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the district contribution to Memorial Park for the baseball field renovation.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six zero.
Great. I will be working with Michael at the city on the lease agreement and hopefully have that for approval, um, in the next couple of meetings.
Okay.
Now we got Tony Boothie, uh, give you an update on the K-five assessment conference.
Good evening, school board and Superintendent Dittburner. And I'll just kind of assume that, uh, the school board and, and our citizens of New Prague don't know a lot about the K-five assessment conferences, so I'll just take a brief minute to kind of fill you in. We ran a little bit of a pilot last year, uh, for our K-two in all three elementary schools. What we're trying to do is work smarter, not harder. And what I mean by that is you've been talking, uh, this entire school board, uh, meeting about different assessments and, uh, collecting data on students and things like that. We, we do that, uh, probably the most at elementary schools. Those are those critical learning years. So a lot of assessments are completed in K-five every fall. Um, there's a number of teachers that we employ that can complete some of the assessments for all of our kids. And what happens in the three elementaries with six hundred-plus kids in each is we spend a good month to a month and a half assessing kids to kind of see where they're at, placing them in different, uh, programs, uh, or groups, uh, to, uh, help them with their learning. What we're going to be able to do by. with their learning. What we're going to be able to do by working with them, what would be the first two days of school, the August 31st and September 1st, that's Monday and Tuesday before Labor Day, we're starting early, the K-5 elementaries will not be in session. We will have assessment conferences at that time. Each family will sign up online for a conference with the teacher. That will be, this is what we believe to be also one of the most important things, is each parent will be able to meet with their teacher for approximately ten minutes and tell the teacher about their child. And there's a difference between the teacher talking to the parents and the parents talking to the teacher. Our assessment conference, our conference with the teacher, we want the parents to be able to let the teachers know about their child, their son or daughter. And that's a very important thing for our staff. After approximately ten minutes, the student will be assessed, mostly in the area of reading, language arts. And they will be assessed, some of the assessments we already have within the buildings, Fontis and Pennell is the name of one of the assessments that we'll be using. And that really provides a lot of wonderful data for our teachers. At the conclusion of two days, our grade-level teachers, let's just say I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Eagleview, and I have twenty-four kids within my class, I will have met with the parents of twenty-four kids, and I will have assessed all twenty-four kids myself. There's nothing more beneficial for our teaching staff to do than to assess the kids on their own. In the past, we've had other staff members, reading specialists, RTI teachers, go around and do a lot of the assessments. And then the grade-level teacher, the fourth-grade teacher at Eagle, would get a couple pieces of paper that showed where their kids were at. Big difference between seeing and reading on a piece of paper what your kids can do and assessing them yourself. You're actually getting to listen to them read, you're following along, you're the one completing the assessment, you know exactly where they end up. So after the two days, and what I did in preparation of helping the elementary principals in the district do this, is went to three different school districts who have been doing this for a number of years. All of them speak very highly. They say that they start teaching the first day of school and not waiting for assessments to be completed a month after. A lot of times, it was MEA before we were getting interventions completed on some of our students because we had to wait that long for the data. The data will be completed after two days of assessment conferences, and teachers will be able to begin teaching. Specialists will be able to specialize their instruction on the students who need either remedial-type help or more gifted-level help with differentiation. The other good point about this is there will be no more open house. This will be the open house. It's still going to fit the bill there as far as we're going to have transportation there, health services, food services, community education, and a plethora of other things that parents would normally see at the open house. Any questions that are going to be answered, we will have all of our services at each elementary for both days. Our assessment conference times, and I just want to point this out for parents, there's been one letter already sent home to parents. It was in the main newsletters. A second letter will go out with the report cards. And then continued follow-up throughout the summertime, we'll be letting parents know when they can go online and sign up for their assessment conference. So just to reiterate again, on Monday, August 31st, and Tuesday, September 1st, we will have K-5 assessment conferences. There is no school for those students, but every family will sign up one conference and a time slot for their child. That information will be coming out as the season, or as the summer progresses. We do have some nighttime. Monday, it's eleven AM to eight PM, and Tuesday is nine AM to six PM. We want to make sure we have afternoon and evening time available for, of course, our working parents. But the school will not be in session K-5. It will be six through twelve. School will be in session six, twelve, just not K-5. It's a new concept. It's been, a number of school districts around us have been doing it for quite some time. We had a pilot last year, K-2, and it went very well. Parents were very receptive. The K-2 teachers were phenomenal. They said, "We can start teaching on that very first day of school because I know exactly how to flex group my kids. I know exactly where to place my students." And it just gives them a lot of wonderful information, and they don't have to wait a month to a month and a half to gather that. Anything I missed? Maybe Mr. Dittberner, or otherwise questions from the board?
You know, it's not, I don't want this to come out too. I mean, like you said, there's a pilot done, but it wasn't top-down, the principal saying, "We're going to do this type of thing." We had a number of teachers that were on the committee that looked at this. Do you want to talk about that real quick?
Yeah. So probably about a month ago, I brought in a teacher representative from each of the schools. And a lot of information has been shared with our teachers and gathered. So they put forth, you know, like one of the things Tim Ledwine from Raven Stream said, "Third, fourth, and fifth grade really don't need thirty minutes for an assessment. Twenty minutes is probably okay." Well, kindergarten teacher from Eagleview, Joanne Thorpe, said, "Well, K-1, 2 really does need thirty minutes." So we were able to provide and set up our conferences by grade level, specific to the needs of the students. So opportunities like that from our staff to give us feedback so we can set this up. We want this, number one, to help our kids. That's the first thing. And if our teachers can begin teaching to the specific needs of each student the first day of school, we are going to be so far ahead for every student. Two, we want it to be workable for the parents. And then three, we want the teachers to be comfortable because they're the ones working and doing the assessments. And they're going to be long days for those staff, but they also see the good that it's going to do. And they're very excited about it.
Did other districts get a hundred percent turnout or close to it, I assume? And if we don't, do you follow up with parents, or will you?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable with that. Jordan, I'll just use Jordan as an example. I think they had two families, and both of them had called in and said, "We're going to be gone that first week of school anyway." They had something planned. If, for some reason, a family doesn't sign up for an assessment conference during workshop week, our teachers will have access to the online signup. So I'll be able to go through, I'm just the fourth-grade teacher at Eagleview. Again, I'll be able to go through my twenty-four kids. If I have twenty-two signed up, I can pick out the two families that have not yet signed up, and our teachers will give them a call and schedule them. And if anybody has an issue with those two days, if there's just something in life that they can't make it those two days, we will accommodate as best as we possibly can. But last year was a very positive first step.
How many did you get that couldn't make it when you did the pilot last year, K-2?
I don't have those exact numbers, Kitten. It was done a little bit less informal, more informal, I guess you could say. But according to the principals and our K-1, 2 teachers, I would say the majority of all of them did sign up. We really didn't have any problems.
It was a large majority. It's, and I walked around, I remember, you know, visiting with like all the first-grade teams one day from each of the schools. And they really liked it because they're used to doing assess, they're trying to assess in that first month, like Tony said. And they got a classroom of twenty-two kids, and they're trying to assess one kid. And they had twenty-one other kids trying to do it, and keeping their eye on those twenty-one that still did the assessment. And so it was just great for them to be able to get the assessment done right away, and then they can just get to work rather than being distracted doing it that way and sort of lagging behind.
If I could just make one more comment. I did bring up, and if it's some parents watching at home here, and I did say there will be no open house. That may make some parents nervous or anything like that. But for those of you that have had kids in schools lately, when Mr. Priville, two years ago, had his medical procedure, and I filled in with him, I attended the elementary open house, and I hadn't been to one of those in quite a few years. And it was, it was quite the experience for me. There's a lot of people within our elementary schools at that time. Our parents are going to be better served this way. Many open houses, you really don't even get to talk to the teacher. It's just kind of a bring your kid to school and put the Kleenex boxes in the desk and those types of things. This is going to be very individualized, very hands-on, and our parents will not walk away with any questions. I can guarantee you that.
Tony, would they be bringing their school supplies during that assessment time?
Are you asking me that as a mother or as a school board employee?
Both, both. I'm sure it will come up.
Details that aren't totally, but I'm quite certain, most likely, yes, they will.
And preschool, do they have their own assessments that they do? I know that they have assessments.
Yeah, I don't think, they don't do anything like this, you know. And whether it's good or bad, assessments are starting to be part of even preschool. And I wouldn't, I don't believe, you know, because we're going to, you know, Lana Puffer is, of course, retiring. We're going to be adding that new person. So I don't want to speak for them and say yes or no. But as far as I know right now, there is nothing that's going to start before school or before preschool. All of that would take place during normal business hours.
Tony, how are students with special needs accommodated in this situation?
Yeah, I mean, you know, Denny, you know better than anybody. The special needs spectrum is very large. Any, the majority of all of our students will still be assessed. If they can, if they can read, they will be assessed by our teaching staff, and they will go through the normal battery of assessments that all of our students do. If we have some students that have higher special ed needs and this isn't appropriate, what we're going to be doing at those times is actually meeting with the parents. We're going to, we're going to do a much better job of meeting with our parents ahead of the school year starting. So we're going to ask those parents to come in, meet with our special education staff and our general education teaching staff, and get the needs out there right away. Sometimes we have to wait for a few weeks into a month of school to get going, to even get some of the parents in. So all of those will be accommodated, and their best interests will be taken into account immediately. Just had one more thing. I think they shut my mic off. I get that. It happens at home too. I know Mr. Dittberner didn't say it, and we definitely can do it via email, but on Friday, June 5th, will be our last, that's our workshop day, the end-of-the-year celebration, where everyone, of course, is invited as a school board. And we have you go up on the stage on the side and shake the hands of the ten-year recipients, all the way up to our retired folks. So as a person who works closely with that, I'd just like to officially invite everybody to that celebration. We do have a breakfast at seven-thirty to eight o'clock, and then the program will start in the auditorium at eight AM. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Next, we need to pass a set sale resolution.
At this time, I'll consider a motion for the resolution providing for the sale of general obligation school building bonds, covenanting and obligations of the district to be bound by and to use the provisions of the Minnesota statutes to guarantee the payment of the principal in interest of the bonds.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. The board hereby finds and declares that it is necessary and expedient for the district to sell and issue its fully registered general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount of fifty-eight million, four-hundred-eighty thousand dollars. This is in regards to the voter-approved May 5th acquisition and betterment of our school sites and facilities. The board, having been advised by Springstead Incorporated, its independent financial advisor, hereby determines that this issue shall be privately sold and the receipt of written proposals as authorized pursuant to Minnesota statutes. The board shall meet at the time and place specified in the terms of the proposal attached hereto, to receive and consider proposals for the purchase of said bonds. The terms and provisions of the proposal is substantially in the form that is written by the State of Minnesota Education Department. The district hereby covenants and obligates itself to notify the commissioner of a potential default in the payment of principal or interest on its general obligation building bonds and to use the provisions of Minnesota statutes. The district further covenants to comply with all procedures now or thereafter established by the Department of Budget and Education of the State of Minnesota pursuant to the statutes. The chair, clerk, and superintendent or business manager is authorized to execute any applicable Minnesota Department of Education forms. Springstead Incorporated is authorized to prepare an official statement and to open, read, and tabulate the proposals for the presentation to the board. How do you vote on this resolution, Don?
What's, are you going to say something?
Here for questions.
Okay. I vote yes. Jean?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes.
And just please note that the bond sale will be held on July 13th, and we'll be having a special meeting. That normally is a workshop meeting. We'll have, just having a special meeting to accept the sale of those bonds. And the proceeds will be distributed around August 20th.
Next, on the agenda, we have the school lunch prices.
I make a motion. We approve the school lunch prices that were presented at the workshop.
Do you want to go over them again for...
I might do that just for the, for the camera, for the public, even though it was gone, it was gone over at the workshop, if that's okay. Okay. Basically, here I list the current lunch prices. Elementary at two forty-five, secondary at two sixty, adult three sixty, milk fifty cents, and breakfast a dollar forty. If recall, last year, we increased the adult by ten cents, and we increased the milk by five cents. Breakfast is a new program this year, and that was set at a dollar forty back in February, when we started offering breakfast at our pilot program. Next year, we'll have breakfast at all three of our elementaries, and that will be the price still. Attached to the board docs, we have a lunch price comparison, both to surrounding districts and our comparable districts, and also have a lunch price rate history attached to the board docs for the public's viewing. And basically, this year, we are recommending that we have a ten cents increase. If you recall, from the Health and Hungry Free Kids Act of 2010, there's something called paid lunch equity, where federal funds cannot be used to subsidize fully paid-for meals by families. And they have a tool that you use to calculate if there's an increase required, and we did have a ten cent increase required this year. So we will be increasing everything by ten cents except milk. We will keep that at fifty cents. And that's it.
I'll second Don's motion then.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero.
All right.
Next, we have special education approval.
Yes, at the workshop in, two weeks ago, we presented information. Amy Vandenberg, Andy, Amy Johnson, I went back a couple of years. Amy Johnson is asking for approval of a point-five increase in special ed teaching, FTEs. We moved a point-five teacher at the middle school to the high school to help with caseloads. And since making that decision, we've had several more referrals for special ed at the middle school. And so she is requesting a point-five increase at the middle school.
I'll make a motion to increase the special ed full-time equivalency by point-five.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Now, we have a preliminary reading, first reading of the budget with whatever numbers you'd like to use, I guess, the state contribution.
Yeah, we're not sure about that. So Sandy's going to take us through this, and I'll clarify some things on each of the slides she goes through. So go ahead, Sandy.
Okay, first of all, attached in board docs, just for the public, would be this presentation. We have, you know, a detail of the preliminary budget itself. We have preliminary fourteen, fifteen results, and a detailed capital budget. I will not be going through all those documents. I'll just be going through the presentation this evening. First of all, the projected results for this year. You can see our fiscal year and last year, what our revised budget was and what I'm projecting to be the You can see our fiscal year and last year, what our revised budget was and what I'm projecting to be the actual. First, for total, you can see our fund balance will not be changing a whole lot from last year to this year, projected actual. Unassigned will not be changing much either. I had projected a, you know, deficit spending budget, and really, there's two things that are contributing to more of an even, even year. One is revenue is coming in about 1.8% over budget, and most of that is the $600,000 from the window settlement. And then expenses is about, is about 1.5% under budget. And also want to note, I'll be going through this later, but we will be, of that $600,000, we are going to be, I'm going to propose that we assign $150,000 of that for expenses for next year, that will be incurred next year. So that will not be part of our unassigned fund balance for next year.
And then the rest will cover expenses for this year for the windows?
The rest will be deferred maintenance.
Okay.
Which I will cover again later, yeah. Okay, our revenue assumptions, basically, I'm using November enrollment projection, plus 40 for kindergarten per our current enrollment, which was very good news, that our kindergarten, I projected 256, we're actually at 296. And that will be an increase of 58 pupil units from this year. Assuming 1% on the formula for next year and 1% in special ed aid. Obviously, with legislature right now, you know, the current, the current, the last proposal was 1.5% on the formula, the governor's asking for 2% on the formula, and if we have those numbers prior to the final reading in, in June, I will put those numbers in there. Other revenue will stay fairly flat, except, of course, we won't have a repeat of the $600,000 settlement money. And we are losing one, that one-time teacher evaluation aid of $83,000 that we got this year. We will not get it next year.
That's the example I gave you of unfunded mandate. They funded basically one year, and now it's gone, so it's like ongoing, so. You know, the districts that have Q Comp, you know, they have money to do this continually, but you don't, if you're not a Q Comp district, we're trying to do it in the most cost-effective way possible. Bethany Pearson, we moved into that position this year. Part of her position was paid with also gifted and talented money, but that was her salary come, basically coming out of that. But we're, we gotta keep going with the state evaluation program, so we're out money based on that. So that's a great example of an unfunded mandate by the, by the legislature.
There's several staffing changes that you have approved over the last two board meetings. Remember, we have the 4.0 at the middle school, additional FTEs, the .5 special ed that you just approved this evening, 1.5 elementary, .97 high school, and then the special ed supervisor to special ed director, which was also approved a couple of meetings ago.
And then one comment I want to make too is on the elementary. It's at 1.5 right now, but we're keeping a close eye on one of the grade levels at Falcon Ridge is at its highest range right now. And the one elementary that increased the most from year to year and also during the year is Falcon Ridge. This is more anecdotal, but the housing, heritage, and out towards Cedar Lake, which is in the Falcon Ridge, I think is, we've had the most residence enrollment increase from anything. Open enrollment was basically consistent between all three elementary buildings, but new students in the new Prague School District, we had the greatest increase at Falcon Ridge. And so we're keeping a close eye on that one, so don't be surprised at June, possible increase there if our numbers indicate that. But right now, we're trying to track drops also, so you have that going on.
Can you back up?
Yes.
No, not that far. What, oh, what is, how do you get a .97?
Well, that's just because-
Only the high school can do that.
Yeah, because, because the high school, like, you know, one section is point.
One.
One six seven or something, so yeah, so you, you know, you increase a little bit, decrease a little.
He didn't, is it five, four or five different subject areas?
Yeah.
Increasing, increasing in language, decreasing in a couple of other areas, yeah. So that's how you get that.
What does that last sentence mean?
Amy Johnson has been the special ed supervisor, and we had proposed creating a special services director. Was it two meetings ago, or was it last, I forget if it was in April, to, to change that to a special services director position. A couple of other comments to make about new, new programs. Craig Most has checked into a bus tracking software program. That's going to cost about $22,000 a year, we can use Safe Schools money for that. Tim had asked him to check into that.
I, and I'll just comment right now on this. That is, you know, we've got, I always say 160 square miles, we've got some severe weather. What this system will do is that the parents, the students at home will be able to see where their bus is at. So they don't, if their bus comes at 6:45 a.m., you know, they don't need to get out there at 6:40 if they see the bus still five miles away. So it's, it's a new software, we're going to use it on Safe Schools money. You know, it's like, you know, I, I just think it's an important thing to have. I think, I think our, our residents, our citizens, our parents and students would think it's a valuable thing, and technology is a wonderful thing, and I think this is one thing that if we can do it and prioritize it within our budget, I think it's, it's, you know, it saves schools money, and I think it's, it ties right into that.
Is there an app to track it?
Yeah, there's other districts I've heard of that do it, right?
Yep, there's a few others, it hasn't really caught on that much, but I think more and more we're going to it. And, you know, it depends on the size of the school district. I think in rural school districts like we have right now, you know, get kids out on the highway and stuff like that, I just, I think this is the right thing to do. And Craig went and, you know, he met with the vendor and got the price, and he's just like, oh, my gosh, you know. And I, and the more I thought about it and processed it and talked to some people, I just think it's the right thing to do. You know, it's an expensive app, but I think it will benefit a lot of kids.
Now, is it that, is that an annual?
Yes, it'll be annual.
Because you'll have updates, I'm sure, there'll be like updates to the app, okay.
You know, and if it doesn't work, I mean, if it causes more problems, or if it's, you know, if there maybe could be a better app, maybe one less expensive the next year, who knows? But we're going to try it and go with it, but I think, I believe it'll be a pretty popular thing.
And a lot of parents, you know, they'll know when their child got on the bus, they'll know when they got off the bus, they'll know, what you were saying too, waiting for the bus, but then they'll also know that they got on the bus.
I'm also putting some money for a job description and evaluation project for pay equity. We've really, since I started, or a year after I started, we've really been in need of doing this. The evaluation system that we use for pay equity is very outdated, and it's been difficult to try to translate that into something that the State of Minnesota recognizes for pay equity purposes. So I really do think the time is right to try to do that. Not quite sure what that looks like right now, but wanted to put it in the budget. It's not a total increase to the budget, because last year, we did a, every other year, we have to do a, an analysis for, for GASB, for other post-employment benefits, an actuarial analysis is the word I'm looking for. And so that was done last year, and so we won't be doing that this year. And so I think that's an important project. We also, Alani and Craig have been talking about this for quite some time, having an high school, a high school auditorium budget with our brand-new equipment. We have seen the need for someone who kind of manages that system and is responsible for it, so we don't have groups coming in and, you know, making changes to it and so forth. And also for repairs, when they have to be made, nobody knows how to pay for repairs that have to be made in the auditorium. So we're starting out just with something very small, just $10,000, let's see how it works. But Tim has more to say about that.
Yeah, in the spring, I got hired as superintendent, I remember, we've talked about this at that time, or I did with Larry at the time, because we were making an investment in the sound system. Now, do you remember how poor the sound system was? But we're putting a lot of money in that auditorium to make it better. And talking to Larry at the time, he was talking at, when he was at Jordan, he hired a person, that person was in charge and of that sound booth, and so you didn't. Right now, we got different people coming in there all the time, and we had a dance recital the other night, and my first dance recital, a long time, but the couple nights previous was, it didn't work because we had, again, new people in there and moving chords around and stuff like that, so we had a delay at the start of the dance recital, but it's happened more than once. But we've got to get someone that takes ownership in that sound booth and can work with people and make sure it's always running for every event that we have there.
Would they be there for every event, then, or?
If they're not there, they'll be able to train, I'm guessing to be able to train the people in.
Excuse me, trained in the operation of the equipment.
Yep.
I, I think that's an excellent idea, because like you say, that equipment is very specific. It's very high-tech, and you just can't have people messing around with that stuff and screwing it up for the next people that want to use it, so I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it's not like people are intentionally doing it, but we've got just too many cooks in the kitchen.
Right, too many people that think they know how to run it and don't-
It's not as simple as a stove, so.
I don't think so.
Or a microwave.
You can make the cost, you know, a part of the rental fee for outside groups.
You're absolutely right, yep. And it's, yeah, it's sort of like the same thing we're doing at the stadium. You know, you, you put that much money into it, you got to make sure you're taking care of it, and you got someone looking it over and-
How many groups do we have that pay at the high school rental?
Sandy, we got-
You know, I, I'm, I'm not sure, I know we have dance recitals.
The main ones external that rent it are the theater groups and the dance groups. Those are the two big ones.
We use it a lot internally, though, and internally, it's no different, really.
Yeah, it's no different.
Still want the equipment run correctly. Just other comments, as in past years, I've put in a $200,000 district contingency. Again, we'll have $75,000 in the budget for turf replacement, putting away that money towards when the turf has to be replaced. We're continuing the Power for Learning Initiative rollout to the middle school. And as planned, we are reducing the curriculum budget by another 25%. The plan was to reduce that by 25% per year until it's stable, leveled out at a, at a level that's acceptable. We also have two special ed vans in the budget, and that is paid for with federal funds, or two of our special ed vans are in need of replacement, and we will sell the ones we have probably, which helps a little bit, but that has to be in the budget this year.
And I would say the, the Power for Learning Initiative with the Chromebooks, this is a great example of what we did, and like I told people on our referendum presentations about just reprioritizing, that we're not increasing our budget, but we're reprioritizing. So we're not spending as much in traditional curriculum purchases because we're putting it into the, the technology, the Chromebooks. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The capital plan, again, the detail is attached. We have special projects of about $250,000, which is a little bit higher than normal, but we have a, the majority of that is for wireless and core switches at the elementary buildings for when they do their wireless or their one-to-one initiative. We need a new firewall, and very minor was a media center projector at Falcon Ridge. We also have a little bit in there for some buildings and ground and athletics projects, as we normally do. Annual, annual allocations of $484,000, these are things like software for education, server space, grounds maintenance, equipment for buildings and grounds, our, our, building capital allocations and so forth. And then no buses, no bus purchases for this year, for next year. Craig has looked at his fleet, and he, we can skip one year, which saves us an awful lot of money.
Yeah, and just I want to go back to the technology investment, $185,000. It's the same thing we did to get ready for the rollout at the high school with the Power for Learning Initiative. We've got to make the investment, otherwise, you know, it's not going to work. I mean, and it was a huge success this year with the Chromebooks at the high school. And I know there's a lot of skeptics because we didn't, but we made that investment, and it's worked out very well at the high school, and we're confident at the middle school, but we've got to get ready for the elementary.
Deferred maintenance, normally, I've, every other year, I've had a 10-year deferred maintenance plan. Looks out 10 years, and we really are reassessing that due to the bond election. That will take a lot of the deferred maintenance projects off the table, starting with the roof project that was due to be done this summer on the old section of, of the CEC. And the Raven Stream and Eagle View Window Project will replace that roof project. So then we're able to put some of that $600,000 into our fund balance, which is really a, a better way to do that, because there's no restrictions on that money. Next year, we do have the ECFE Building Roof Project, and then I always built in a little, build in a little contingency for that. But we won't be having a deferred maintenance plan to present this year due to the fact of our bond election, we're still reassessing that. Next steps, June 22nd, I'll be asking for the budget approval. We are required by statute to have it approved before June 30th. September, we'll have audit results. December of 2015, we'll have the final budget with updated five-year projections. And you'll also notice in the detailed budget docket, documents, I don't have really a budget in for construction funds in the bond sale. I was thinking it would be better to wait until we have some actual numbers for that. They, the numbers are what they are, and it'll be more accurate if I just wait until, until we, after the bond sale and so forth. Then I'll have a drawdown schedule from the architect and so forth. Now here, just, just to very summarize, I will not be going through the budget documents in detail, they're posted. Lots of detail, but this just shows for the total general fund and the unassigned general fund, what the revenue and expense numbers are. I am projecting that we will do a spend-down of our, you know, general fund balance. And that's, again, without the revenue increasing more potentially, so these graphs will probably look different when I present them in, in the end of June. This is the general fund balance history, see, the total is in the orange and the unassigned is in the light blue. And you'll see, you know, 20, 13, 14, kind of topped out, expecting them to level out for 14, 15. And then again, the projection would be, it would, it would go down. Remember, this, these are preliminary numbers, and we have full contingency built into that. Number of 200,000, we have high severance payments, we never know what those are going to be, but that is the current preliminary budget.
Yeah, and I would just say in the 14, 15, as you can see, that the fund balance, the ending fund balance, we stayed pretty flat. It was, one reason why is we came 1.5% under budget, and then obviously, the window settlement also, like Sandy mentioned earlier, helped us.
Yeah, and remember, these numbers, these are just preliminary, and I'm making estimates based on what I know today, so they certainly could change.
They look a lot better than 2006 and '07.
Yeah, very lots better. Now, we have the general fund reserved and committed accounts. You can see staff development is the first, first there. You see, we've had a little bit of fund balance, and projecting next year, it will go down some. That's mainly due to the fact that we don't have the $83,000 again next year for the teacher development initiative. Deferred maintenance, you can see, we'll spend that down with our roof proj, with our window project. Think that's appropriate to do at this point. Health and safety will be negative again, that, again, the timing between levy and projects, it's always kind of up or down. Operating capital, we have been spending that down a little bit, we will again this year. This is the first year that our operating capital revenue will be, will be decreased due to the capital facility bond payment on this stadium. ALC, we expect a zero fund balance there. Gifted and talented, that's been growing a little bit. I've been working with Tony Boothey on a plan on how to use that fund balance in gifted and talented. Safe schools, you know, not a lot of change. We spent that down in 13, 14 with all of our security upgrades. End up a little bit this year, a little bit more next year, perhaps. Severance, you can see there, that varies so much by when people retire, when teachers and other staff retire, and then turf replacement at the end of next year would be $150,000. And finally, other funds, you see our nutrition service fund has been going down. We've had that revenue issue. It will go down again this year, we hope that next year, that will level off. Kim has been doing a great job of looking at options and trying to increase our revenue and finding cheaper ways of doing things. Community service, we'll lose a little bit of fund balance this year, but next year, we hope to rebound a little bit. To note on the community service, we've had a rather high negative unassigned fund balance, and we've been transferring $50,000 per year to eliminate that. Next year, that should be eliminated, will be in the positive, and then that, that transfer from the general fund will be just what we need to cover our early childhood, our preschool screening initiatives. And then capital projects, obviously, will go down, we're spending that money this year on our stadium. The, the final budget will look a lot different for Fund 6. And that's all I have for tonight. Any questions or comments for Tim or myself?
You know, I got a question, we're putting the $75,000-
You know, I got a question. We're putting the seventy-five thousand dollars away for the turf and now we're building a swimming pool. Is there such a thing as putting money away just in case ten years down the road, something happens to the swimming pool that we have to stick money in? Like a deferred maintenance, that it's a pool fund?
It's possible, you know, some of that will be determined by the joint powers agreement we have with the city and how, you know, how we'll handle major, you know, capital expenditures for the pool. And I'll probably be working with the pool designers or the aquatics people to really analyze that and see what the plan of action should be.
We're gonna have to do quite some extensive research into that, look at other, we, we've started this. I mean, we've looked at other districts, what they're doing and we've had a, even a preliminary meeting with the city, you know, back before, doing even presentations, I mean, to get them to onboard, so. We're a little bit of idea on that, but yeah, we gotta wait. It's too early to say on that right now.
Good, good question.
And the other thing is, if our Mr. Governor gets his way regarding early childhood, how does that affect, will that affect us or how will it affect us? Do you have any idea? If it gets approved, I don't, I don't know, I mean.
That's, that's a very good question. I don't know a lot of details about his plan. Certainly at the Senate and the House, their plan was to put more money toward early, you know, towards scholarships. Right now with our free and reduced, we don't have a lot of people that qualified for those scholarships. We do have, we do have several families that qualify for those scholarships and it's possible that we'd have more families who would qualify for those scholarships, but as far as what it would mean if you funded half-day preschool, I, I, I don't know. We'd have a year to plan. It wouldn't start next year, it would be the following year.
It's hard to say universal. I will say if parents do choose to, it wouldn't be mandatory, but we'd offer it, but families would save money, but as far as, yeah, it's hard to say how much we would, we would get funded by it. What I, what's gonna happen will take money off the formula. You understand? I mean, I, I'd rather get the money, we decide what we do with it. And like Sandy said, as far as the scholarship, those are based for students really in poverty or that there is a need for, which is a good thing. But it really, for us, we don't have that many families that can qualify for, at least the way it is right now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we, we don't have a, a contract from Wold Architects yet, right?
No, right, I did get that Friday afternoon. Had a couple of questions for Attorney, I had Jay Squires review both the ICS and Wold contracts. I had a couple of questions. Emailed Jay, didn't hear back, so right now I do have the ICS Services Agreement to approve. And Wold, either we'll do a special meeting in June or we'll wait until the end of June to, or June twenty-second to approve that.
So we just need a motion to approve the ICS?
Okay, not the Wold.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the contract to the ICS Consulting Services.
Erkan.
Any questions on the contract? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. The Alco Newmarket mowing agreement.
Yes, last year is the first year we entered into an agreement with them to mow our school premises, really a good collaboration between the city and the school district. We want to do that for another year. The terms and conditions have not changed. It's still a hundred and sixty-one dollars per mowing of the service areas. The agreement is attached for your review. Really would recommend approval of that agreement.
And basically the reason that we do it is because it's efficient for us and it's
We don't have to take our mowing equipment.
And if I can add too, it's nice that you don't have to leave the mower there on the grounds and then it's been, not that it's been an issue, but when soccer comes, you don't have to have it there in sight or the blade up, it, yeah.
Yeah, and I think the other thing is just, it's one more thing and there could be other things that come up in the upcoming years that we can share or collaborate on too, so I, I just think it's a good partnership, just like we do with the city of New Prague.
Yeah, it's a good move.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. I need to approve the certification of the district population.
We view, we're using the same methodology we've used in the past. We, Krista has contacted the various government entities in our district boundaries and asked how many housing permits have been issued. We had a total of seventy-three. Since the last time we did this, we use a demographic, demographic factor of two point five two, which gives us an increase of our, in our population of a hundred and, almost a hundred and eighty-four. So we're just asking that you approve the certification of population. I'll send an email or a letter to the state demographer. We use this for a lot of community services funding.
I'll make a motion to approve the district population or certification of the district population.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Now we need to approve the health and safety budget and the health and safety policy.
Right, this is a new requirement. I think it's, this is the third year of this and just have to approve the fiscal year. Actually, you look at this current fiscal year, fiscal year sixteen and seventeen estimated budget. This is used for levy certification or levy purposes. Just ask you to approve that and then reaffirm the policy that actually was on the agenda tonight. So need to do that in order to qualify to levy health and safety dollars.
I'll make the motion to approve the health and safety budget for policy eight oh seven.
Second.
You know, I had, I had one question on some of the numbers in that budget. Is it just based on what projects you have to do, the, the variations in numbers year to year?
Right, for instance, the middle school, if you look at three forty-seven, the middle school had a big health and safety project this year. Was it, or three forty-nine? I forget. Anyway, there was a big, big project and that will not be done next year, so that, right, there's variation.
Any other questions?
And then, okay, for the asbestos, I can't say that.
Asbestos.
Thank you, asbestos. Is that gonna still be the same when we tear down the, or is it not?
Yeah, the asbestos that's in our health and safety plan right now, is it Falcon mainly?
Okay, okay.
Yep, and that's, there's a planned asbestos abatement plan for Falcon Ridge. A big question came up. There is a lot of asbestos, asbestos in the old nineteen twenty-three portion and all that will have to be abated and that is in the project costs.
Okay, so it's separate then? It's what's we have, the referendum?
Yes.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
I have a Portuguese here. In the past, in the summer, we've altered our meeting schedule. I know we have a lot of things, so maybe we're not gonna, I just wanted to bring it up.
It'll be up to you guys aboard here. My recommendation, we keep the two in June. It's, we're gonna have a busy June. We have the July thirteenth, but if we go one in July, I think we'd be okay and go back to two in August, but we've done that in the past.
We can talk about it at the work session maybe, what works for July.
Oh yeah, we don't have to act down, but.
Yeah, wait till July, put it on the work session or June.
Did we include the policy in that approval we just made or just the budget? Okay.
I said the policy.
Okay.
Did I hear that or did I?
Okay.
So we'll, we'll talk about that in our, the schedule in our work session in June. You want to make the motion to adjourn?
Oh, you're waiting for that? Are we ready? I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero.